To consider the budget for next year for Tuesday, January 24, 2017. We expect a full house, but at the moment, Mr. Mark Patton is here, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Ms. Tricia Pitko, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Connolly, and Mr. John Llewellyn, and I would ask you to stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have the agenda in front of us, and we'll kind of go through the book, starting at pages 51, and move our way through. As you know, Item 3E is a discussion of the Superintendent's recommended budget request, which is intended to have a discussion on if there are any changes going to be proposed by members, that we get them out on the table so that all of the members know that the subject might be coming up on Thursday, and also it will give the staff a chance to do the math so that we know exactly what accounts might be impacted positively or negatively. And so, in order to end with some reasonable hour and get public comment as well, I think I'd like to look at like nine o'clock and see where we are for discussion, and then try and get to Item 3E by nine o'clock, nine fifteen, and then public comment. So, we might be out of here at 10 o'clock, plus or minus. So, if we can move through the agenda that way, that I think would be helpful. So, having said that, the book pages 51 through 102. Any members have questions that they want to ask? Ms. Pitko.
Can I first just say happy birthday to Jennifer?
Is that a question or a statement?
My question actually is on pages 70 and 71, and I did ask it, and you guys answered it. I just need a little more clarification. Being an educator, if you look at subs for Ludlow, Ward, and then under Personal Services, it seems like we're really optimistic in that in the last two years, we went over what we had budgeted for subs, and we're already proposing well below where we were last year with the actual.
I can tell you, we do run a lot of data and look at that over time. It has to do with what we know about staff, and feel free to come in and chime in if you want to. Staff that we know in particular buildings that are going to be out for a full year, things of that nature. We have a big old chart that goes through every building.
Hi, Anne Lefort, Director of Human Resources. What you don't see there is we can't predict who those long-term absences are going to be, and frequently if someone is out on maternity leave, for example, they stay out longer, they get to an unpaid leave of absence, we switch money from payroll accounts into the sub accounts. So, it looks like we're way short, you know, you're going to be a million dollars in the red or whatever. That doesn't happen. We're able to recoup the salary from the salary accounts.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Wait, wait.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
I apologize, I just wanted to save you from, because I had asked a question about that same issue as well, and I'm trying to get caught up in reading the answers to it. My question had been for the subs was regarding when it's not the long-term health and not disability issues, that it's using their contractually obviously allowed days, but using a lot of them, and that what I was curious about is that does that ever factor into school improvement plans or anything like that where it's some, and obviously that would be very much on a building-by-building issue. If that's something that Central Office ever speaks with principals about as an issue to address, or how is that addressed? Would it be the principal or how else?
So, I don't know if you had a chance to read the answer that actually I provided in the book, but it's something that we've taken a closer look at. Most of our staff do not abuse any kind of leave time that they're entitled to, but what we wanted to do this year, and in cooperation with the FEA, and I'll thank Bob Smoller for that, we worked together with the FEA Rep Council to put together a presentation with some of the data that we've noticed on absences. For example, we see them increase a little bit in the spring. So, just bringing it to the full attention of the faculty, and what we did was put together a presentation so the building administration and FEA reps present it together at each and every building to talk about some of the trends that we're seeing in absences and seeing if we can make a difference there. So, we're working very hard at that. We're also looking at other ways to provide professional development, because as curriculum becomes revised and more complex, teachers need more time to engage in understanding that curricula. So, we're working on a couple of different angles to take a look at that issue.
Thank you.
Other questions on pages 51 through 102? Okay, so why don't we then move on to Mr. Llewellyn?
So, if we look at page 51, I did kind of look briefly at some of the increases we see, and if you do the math on kind of the budgeted payroll, you add a 3 percent, you're directionally there on a lot of these. A couple of them seem to have been slightly out of line. In other words, there would be a much greater increase that was not attributable to the rate increase. One of those was McKinley. There's a $362,000 increase, and you've got a plus one in terms of head count. Of that 362, about 75, 76, it might be attributable to a 3 percent, assuming no turnover. So, there's a $285,000 increase with a plus one. Is there something going on with a change in mix of teachers or?
Still Anne Lefort, Director of HR. That's directly attributable to staff moving around in different salary accounts, and for example, we have staff members from McKinley who are in different grant accounts, and we have a certain amount of grant dollars, so sometimes we have to move a more expensive teacher out of a grant and move a less expensive teacher into the grant in order to meet the top level of our grant dollars.
So, would the grant expense not be here?
So, no, there's a different, I actually have to talk to Doreen about that, she would have to answer that one. So, the teachers again are moved around. We have to account for reductions in 13 sections, and so there could be some movement of staff around to account for where we had new teachers this year, and some of those new teachers do reside at McKinley Elementary School. So, again, it's a shifting around to make sure that we have the right number of staff here, minus 13 at the elementary school.
Right.
At elementary level.
So, but you have, you know, 35.6 teachers identified that make up that exact number? In other words, you could find, you could go back into your system, find 35 names.
Correct.
Look at their salaries, and it would add up to that exact 42,400, whatever.
Correct. And I'll tell you, that'll probably change at the beginning of the school here as well.
Oh, I'm sure it will.
Yeah. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Leaving page 57. You're still on, okay.
56, 57. In terms of school admin staff, we've got two different, we have two different schools that seem to be outside of the norm in terms of increases. We have one elementary school that seems to be getting about a three times raise versus the others, and we also have one of the high schools that has a disproportionate increase as well.
You might just want to stay until we dismiss you. And I assume that you're talking about Mill Hill being one of the elementary schools?
I am.
Yeah.
So, actually, that question came up, I think, last week on the side. There's an anomaly in the salary increases, step increases. So, if you take a look at the salary chart for 15, oh, sorry, 16, 17, and then look at 17, 18, you'll see one year for one reason, there's an anomaly in the chart, that there's a larger step increase there, and that tends to happen when you move levels, try to equalize a salary grid.
So, is this an equalization, or is this just a normal step?
That's a normal step. As I said, it's an anomaly from, I'd have to have the contract in front of me, but if you take a look at where that particular administrator was for this year, 16, 17, and you look 17, 18, you're going to see that big jump there. It's an anomaly in the schedule.
And Mr. Llewellyn, I looked at it, and of the 11 elementary schools, I think four of them have a common salary of X, and the other seven all have a common salary of Y, a few thousand dollars difference.
Well, and that's.
So, this brings that person's salary up to where other people are at that step, I think.
Right, and that's why I'm asking if this is an adjustment or if this is a true step.
That is what is in the salary schedule in the administrator's contract.
Okay, but, you know, what Bill said, it sounds like the others, while it's being brought into alignment. And then, in terms of the high school, same, same difference, we have a high school that have two individuals at about two times the normal increase.
So, I would say that's the same thing, again, an anomaly in the, in the contract for those particular lanes and steps.
They both have the, okay, if you could just validate that for me, because they're both moving up by nearly identical percentages, I believe, which is just serendipitous, I guess, huh?
Yeah, if you have a specific question.
And you're talking about Ward?
If you have a specific question about a line on here, would you just shoot that to me, and I'll send you the schedule so you can take a look at it?
Perfect, thank you.
And you're talking about Ward, correct?
I am.
The one pupil personnel is one person, correct?
Correct.
Whereas the other one, there are three people in that.
No, it's the house master, it's the headmaster and the pupil personnel who are both going up by 7 percent.
Oh, you're dealing with percentages, okay.
Yep, I'll get the salary.
Okay, thank you.
Chart to you.
Can I ask a follow-on question to that?
Sure. Mrs. Lou McCormick?
So, when I understand the step schedule, is it that you're saying that there's like an actual hard salary that's allocated to each of them?
Yes.
Nope, it's not the percentage change that we've contracted to do.
So, the percentage is what impacts every single area of the grid. Same thing for the teacher's schedule. So, sometimes you'll see a less increase, and sometimes you'll see more, it's just the way the money was distributed in the chart.
So, the idea.
Yes, there is a specific salary for each step, for each position. That's a correct statement?
Correct.
Yeah. It's not a percentage.
There's no extra, no extra dollars, adjustments or anything in here, it is strictly what's in the salary schedule on the administrator's salary for 17, 18.
So, all those administrators will make the same amount of money who are on the step schedule together?
Correct. Anyone on step five of the same salary lane, because there are different lanes, differences between an athletic director to a special ed coordinator to a middle school principal, high school principal, those are all different lanes, each of them having six steps.
And so, there's no recognition of years of experience or performance or anything?
The first six steps.
Okay, so six steps.
There are no performance, merit-based, nothing.
Mr. Llewellyn, back to you.
Thank you. We also have a big increase on page 58, about a $14,000 increase in, on line 51, 575, Info That's about a 12 percent increase.
I'm sorry.
51, 575, page 58, Info Technology.
I believe we, I believe we received information on that earlier in the year.
Yes, I believe we did.
But why don't you explain that? So, a $12,000, $15,000 increase is pretty good size.
We looked at the IT director's salary and looked at the market, and I think we got an email that said that an adjustment was warranted, so it's related to that, if I'm correct.
And we're going up again in 17, 18?
Well, you make the decision in the middle of one year, and then it, you have to annualize it all for the next year.
And is that what's occurred here, or is that what we're saying has occurred here? When did it, when was the change effective?
September.
September, so, okay, there are three months, so that would explain, thank you.
Mr. Dwyer, sorry, wasn't there also a change in job description?
There was.
Yes, correct, there was an increased responsibilities, et cetera, yes. That's all that you wanted, okay, back to Mr. Llewellyn?
I'm just flipping through my margin notes here. I had had a question along the lines, I'm on page 67 here. 67 is part-time employment, section 129, and different schools are kind of all over the place, but for example, if we just take a look at the top line, subs were budgeted for 16, 17 at about $16,000, but year-to-date, we're at 26.6. If we move down a couple of lines and look at Holland Hill, budgeted at the same number of 15, 8, and we're at 42, 2. You know, it's back to, you know, are we budgeting this correctly in the first place, and is there a concern that we have a lot of subs rather than staff? And are we filling, do we need to have more staff for, that's a big discrepancy.
So, that's the answer that I provided first at the first question, in that we budget a certain amount. We have no way to predict who's going to be out, who's going to go on a leave of absence, who's going to go on an unpaid leave of absence, so we are able to capture salary from unpaid leaves, and that gets transferred into those accounts to cover.
Right, and I understand the economics of it, I'm just saying, is there a concern? I guess you don't know, so you really can't plan for it.
It's hard to predict, but we've been very good at being able to balance those accounts at the end of the year without a lot of drama, huh?
No, and I get that, I'm worried more about the educational impact than I am the economic. I mean, I'm sure there's a pickup somehow.
Well, you'll see these skewed quite a bit by folks who are on a lengthier leave of absence, someone who's having child-rearing leave. We've hired a lot of young teachers in the past number of years, so we're definitely seeing a baby boom going on with some of our teachers, so it's hard to predict that.
Right, okay, and I guess that number could be one person for a third of the year.
Could be.
And then, page 71, and I think we may have talked about this last week, yeah, last week, line 51, 985, teachers' summer school, the increase of $85,000, which is probably about a third.
So, I'd need Andrea to come up and speak to that.
And again, for Andrea's benefit, could you get this line number for her?
Sure, it's 51, 985, teacher's summer school.
The increase in this account, this summer, because of the way the last day of school ends and the first day of school begins, we're going to need to do some even extension of extended-year services.
Okay.
For some of our kids with the most significant needs. Our best practice in the field is to, for those kids to have 12-month programming with never more than two weeks off, so because we have a lot, there's a longer summer, so I had to build in a cost-inferential, and that means teachers, paras, ed trainers, speech and language pathologists, OTs and PTs. So, it's a pretty big, it's a small group of kids.
Right.
With pretty significant need.
But does that $85,000 represent an incremental two days, two weeks?
Right now, it's two, it's two more weeks approximately, if we don't have any snow.
Right.
So, it's about, you know, I'm the only one who wants the school year to go a little longer personally, but, so it's about two weeks. There is a, not all of that $85,000 is for that, some of it is for just readjusting for other needs for services for the bulk of kids, but that, the bulk of that $85,000 is those, are those services.
Mr. Llewellyn, I think Mrs. Maxon Connolly wanted to follow up.
So, just so, since obviously we're talking about starting mid-June, does this mean it's some of next year's budget that will be wrapping up this year's budget? I mean.
Some.
Or is it, I don't know where the pay date falls, so maybe that's where it matters, but.
July 1. It's July 1.
Okay.
We go all of the month of July, and right now, it looks like almost we'll be doing three weeks into August. Typically, we go just two weeks into August, and then we're back. We have a two-week window for the staff on either end, but it doesn't look like that's going to work this year.
Right.
So, some of this year's budget's going to have to go there, but then there's going to be that two-week period. Most of these students get all but a full day of school, there's paraprofessionals, ed trainers, all kinds of folk that need to be there to make that happen.
Back to Mr. Llewellyn.
Sure, so if we move to page 72, and I think that this follows up on the conversation we were having before the meeting started about the whole pension concept here. Andrew, thank you. It's, the 306 represents a 16 percent increase. That seems like a big increase because of a transition of a couple of folks. I'm almost wondering if we need to go back to the town side, who provides the pension numbers, and see if they are, you know, how those are calculated with the changing number of individuals, but it would be good to know kind of in tabular form, kind of the number of folks we have who are, you know, available or who are receiving, who are eligible, I should say, excuse me, for pension and are being paid over, say, the last four years or something, so we can look at a trend, because I know the 401A started theoretically two years ago, and then the number of individuals who are on the 401A and qualify, on the 401A, and how many of those qualify for matching, if, if less than all, and then below that, you know, some sort of credit for the 25 percent churn that we kind of identified in the prior meeting. But a 16 percent increase just sounds, sounds very high. Does that make sense?
It does, and we do have the non-certified numbers for you, so we can put that in an answer to you. There's 359 that are in-town pension, which is right at 80 percent of our staff right now, and we have 19 percent in the 401A.
But that number is produced by the town, so we really do have to rely on the town getting us the information.
Well, that, right, but we should kind of go back and ask the town, because they may have been calculating it under 100 percent versus, you know, our current 80 percent. But it doesn't make sense that if we're dropping, you know, if we've gone from 100 percent to 80 percent in the last two years, it doesn't make sense that our increase is going up by 16 percent, especially in light of the note that we received, basically saying that, you know, we're 90 percent funded, and we're not, you know, it's not like we're trying to fill a hole. So, I just think if we look at that, that'd be great. Where's a different question, I think it's on page 73, new topic, sorry, Effective Solutions, is that in 303, which is pupil personal services?
Page 73 you're on?
I think so.
Effective School Solutions is in the Consultation Services account.
So, okay, so the first account under the 303?
Yes.
And is that 110 increase related to that or something else?
No, that's related to consultations for students with behavioral issues and autism.
And is that through, I guess because it falls here?
Connecticut Center for Children with Special Needs.
Okay, so because it falls here, it's outsourced?
Yes.
Okay, and is the Effective Solutions staying at the same rate as the existing?
Yes.
Okay, and that's working?
Is it working? I think the students who are in the program are benefiting greatly from the program. The data, but they're, the data that, where they start and where they are now is improving, is showing real, real improvement. So, in my viewpoint, it's working, it's a needed service and doing what it needs to do. We've had to place some couple of students out that just, I think we got too, too late, frankly.
Right.
But the hope is now getting to them sooner. We will see that, see that stabilize and be fewer and far between versus a more regular event.
And are they now, they're at middle school as well, right?
No.
They're not yet.
We wanted to, we, in our initial proposal to the superintendent, we wanted to bring this model into the middle schools, but given all the hard choices we had to make, we felt like we couldn't take that step this year. So, we're still hopeful, but this wasn't the year, given all the other competing interests.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Llewellyn, are you done, or Mr. Calabrese wants to follow up on this particular issue? Mr. Calabrese?
Yes, I have one follow-up for you. All right, so I'm going to look at the other side of that one, instead of being, you know, $110,000 more in the budget, we're $101,000 less than we spent last year. So, are we budgeting enough for this account?
I think so. I think we're, you know, I requested what I believe we needed, we didn't make any other cuts to this account. This is an account that, that does receive some benefit of the excess cost provision.
Okay.
So, we purposefully underfunded, but if you, those of you who are around the past couple of years, we had to make a real investment in this account, because we were underfunding, so I think, I think we're in good shape here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify, we are 100 less than last year, but this year, we're 200 over budget, so it's, it's still an increase versus budget from last year, although, yes, it is lower than being spent.
Agreed.
I'm trying to think if it's in here. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
Just because since we're on page 73, I had a question regarding the program assessment. I did get your answer that regarding that, since the program assessments are in support of the district improvement plan, that it was going down. My question is, what did we, because I know we had talked about that that money for the assessment, since we did not commit it to the PSAT for ninth graders, was going to be going to something else that was of use to, you know, adjusting the curriculum or what have you? Whatever that was that it ended up going to wasn't of value to maintain?
Meg Boyce, Director of Secondary Ed. We used some of it for the world language testing that we brought in at the end. In the district improvement plan, we have world language testing for Level 20, and the world language department asked if they could also test the 40s, but because that wasn't in the district improvement plan, we actually took that out of school-based accounts.
Okay.
And not this account.
Okay. Thank you.
Shall we move on to the next section, Mr. Llewellyn, or?
Just, I suppose, Andre, you've got to come back up, I apologize. On page 75, we have a roughly 30 percent increase, or $127,000 increase in line 62, which I think is just other services?
Yes.
Can you describe, please, what that is?
This, this account, I think we talked about this last time out, too. This account funds things like, for example, if I have a student, of which I have a couple, who have, who are very medically fragile, they would have a full-time registered nurse with them while at school, on field trips, because of the nature and extent of that medical need. So, this is an account that has things like that in it. One of the things that, that plays a big role here is what level, because a student, for example, who's going from elementary to middle or middle to high, who needs something like a full-time nurse, the amount of time, if that student chooses to participate in extracurricular activities, co-curricular activities, overnight field trips, overnight field trips, I need to do a three-shift nurse, so I need to have either three nurses or, because they're 24/7.
Big overtime.
So, those are the kinds of things that get funded. I have, there are students for whom, who, because of their needs, require their entire program to be out of their home.
Mm-hmm.
It's not really homebound instruction in the classic sense, it's their entire educational program, so that's the kind of thing that's provided out of this account. So, we know who these kids are, we know what their needs are, and we know when they move levels, there could be a kind of geometric increase in a particular kind of support.
Okay.
So, that's really what this looks, the big bulk of that increase is about that, is about a movement of a couple of kids.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyones have any questions on that page?
I do on 75.
On 75? Go ahead.
Utilities.
No, utilities, okay, we're good, thank you. Go ahead on utilities.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
Thank you. Again, I thank you for the.
Again, I thank you for the answer that I submitted, question that I submitted so late, and that, but I did want to follow up, because the answer I got is, this is dependent on variables, which, fair enough, considering the breadth of the question that I asked, but this is regarding the budgeting for utilities. And, sort of getting to Mr. Llewellyn's question regarding subs, but with the utilities, which to me are a little bit more stable, I would think, unless we know of a pricing increase for fuel, I didn't understand, for almost every single school, some of the decisions that were made of what was budgeted in, for this school year, what we're actually spending, and then what I would consider a rather drastic change to what we're proposing for this year, and I'd love, some of it, I'd qualify as wishful thinking, except that I'm sure it's not wishful thinking, and I don't understand how we're not going to end up really short in these lines.
Yeah, and Mr. Cullen can provide more detail, but basically, it's what's happening at all the schools. So, if we look at a school like Holland Hill, where we didn't have the trailers, and those came on right when school started, we know that that's probably going to go up. But there may be something else that's also coming off, and so you really have to monitor every building.
That's right. For the record, Tom Cullen, Director of Operations. This is a line item that we watch very closely. A lot of things are affecting the utilities at the schools. As you know, we've been replacing boilers, equipment. Anytime there's a construction project going on at a school, there's contractors on-site with trailers, using electricity. You have solar systems going in, so it does fluctuate. Boilers go down, come offline.
Solar systems.
It's hard. I know, years ago, when we were doing boiler replacements, even the Board of Finance was saying, "How much did we save last year with the new boiler?" It's so hard to pinpoint it down when we're doing new windows, you know, or doing a project at that school.
But, may I pick a few schools, just to, and first of all, I love the image of solar systems being put into our schools. I just, that's going to be my takeaway from this meeting. You know, if I look at something like Burr, and I apologize if I forget if we had work done there, between the natural gas line, and the electricity line, and the heating fuel line, you know, we're proposing a number for this year that we haven't hit in a few years, you know, that on the electricity line, budgeting for $129, and we haven't been within $20,000 of that, you know, in a year, or the heating fuel. So that's the, those are, that's what I'm talking about in terms of the numbers. Not that I wouldn't love us to come in at that $129, I'm just not understanding for several of these schools, where it's coming from, when I wasn't aware that there was work being done.
Understood. Burr, for about five years, we were having some serious issue with the controls. A real lot of problems with the way that building is designed. At any given time, the building will provide heating or cooling, it doesn't matter what the temperature is. So in the summertime, it could call for heating in certain areas, and heat will turn on. But the control systems were very, very difficult. We found a lot of problems with our preventive maintenance search, and the contractors that were working in that building, found a lot of linkages broken on of dampers. It took us quite a while to get everything fixed, and now that we're monitoring and watching it, we are seeing huge savings, now that those things are fixed.
Yeah, that's- $200,000 over the last year.
Right, that's tremendous.
That's good news.
Yeah, no, I'll look at it as the positive. But it appears in other schools. I'm trying to look really quickly now. I mean, for example, North Stratfield, another school which I wasn't aware of there being work done. Electricity, $77,000, but this year, they're estimating $93,000, so logically, next year, we're budgeting 64.
Yep. We did an energy-efficient lighting program at North Stratfield, we also did new boilers that are burning natural gas, more efficient. We saw a huge difference there the first winter.
I mean, I, what I didn't try to do, through the chair to Dr. Jones, was pull out what these savings are, but this could be, if the numbers are as positive as they're initially looking, this might be an interesting sub-report to go before the other town bodies, because I know you do get asked that every year, how do these changes make a difference? But these were some stark contrasts, in terms of numbers going down. I think that could be an interesting story right there, to tell.
Yes.
And great job by the staff in getting all those fixes in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Calabrese?
Just, just following up, and I think to Ms. Maxon Connolly's point, is, if you look at the actual numbers that we spent last budget, and what we budgeted, it does always seem that you're pretty close. So, you know, usage is probably about the same, so I'm just putting my opinion out there that I would trust these numbers, and the fact that, you know, utilities are going to go down about 400,000, and that's huge for this budget. So, you know, thank you for all the work you guys have done, especially with the solar, you know, I've been a huge proponent of that.
Yep, new roofs, new boilers, solar systems.
But, you know, rather than kicking it down the road and costing us money, you know, we've been getting things done, which is-
What's really nice is when our consultants and contractors come back and tell us that our PM programs are working so well, we can reduce some costs. That's starting to happen now, and we're real happy about that.
Well, I like the results so far. Thank you.
While Mr. Llewellyn is conferring, are there any other board members that have questions on pages 51 to 102? Seeing no hands. Mr. Llewellyn, do you have any final questions for that section?
I do. It's a kind of where-is-it question. Where do we see food services? Had to ask, you knew-
Food services, not in the operating budget.
But food services has a guaranteed return to us, in the contract, unless it's been changed.
Dory Monsell, Director of Finance, but that would be, that's in the food service fund. This is the general fund, operating budget.
Okay, so that means, by state statute, we have to approve, I believe, a budget for the food service fund?
I don't think, I don't think so.
In the past, we have not acted on the food service budget, and I think what you're saying is, the guaranteed return remains in that operating fund-
Correct.
-for, to build a balance, a balance that it carries forward.
Right. So I believe that every budget in the town needs to be approved. I don't think you can have it fly under the radar. Up until about three years ago, we had food services part of our main budget, and then it was stripped out.
No.
It was reported in the back, at least.
Yes, there was a page in the back that talked about it, but it was not a, it was not a budget that we approved, it was there for information purposes.
Correct, but the budget needs to be approved, and I think we should probably see, at least see what it looks like. We should understand what our balance sheet looks like, because we were hemorrhaging money there for quite some time, and now we have, we have guaranteed returns. So if we could please get a copy of that for the next meeting.
And you may recall that normally, June is the time that we look at that budget and pass those three resolutions that are required, so June is generally the time that we look at the food service budget.
And I guess, Dr. Jones, I would ask, please, that we see where we are, see what the contract is, see what the balance sheet looks like, at 12:31, please, since it was such a problem in the past?
Anything else, Mr. Llewellyn, on those sections?
That's it for me, thank you.
Okay. Pages 103 to 115, that's a shorter section. Anybody have questions on pages 103 to 115? Don't see any hands go up at the moment, but I'll give you a chance to thumb through your notes on this section. Shall we, Mrs. Lou McCormick?
It's on page 113. Item 317, under 64, Business Services. What is the student transportation increase? Is that, that's $258,000? $258,000? What's that related to? Is that just overall, we needed more buses, or what is that?
Item 64, line 317, correct.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this is our contract increase that we have for our bus contract, which will be actually renegotiated this year, going into next year. And there is one additional bus that is in here this year.
And I know I don't need to say this, but have we looked to see if we can make the routes more efficient, rather than having to add a bus, or cut buses to half-size for those that are lightly, you know, ridden?
We are actually evaluating all of our transportation right now, as well.
But that won't be complete until?
Part of that is understanding the law in Connecticut, and if our interpretation, and how we've interpreted transportation law, is actually in the way that we're applying it. And what I mean by that is, does a seat for every child mean you have to run a bus that has 20% or 40% of the ridership, or can you combine two buses and have fewer students on that, more students on the bus, but still have ample seats for the students who may want to ride occasionally? And right now, we're exploring that.
Okay. And, so again, when would we be able to, when are we expecting to have findings?
I would not count on, even if it were a positive that we get from the analysis, I would not count on that for this FY '18 budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's too bad.
That would be risky, that would be risky to do.
And how are we doing this? Is this just an internal audit, or are we getting external people to look at this as well?
Well, I think that's part of what we'll have to figure out going forward, is do you bring in a transportation consultant that actually goes in, calculates, looks at what we're doing, looks at our routes around the city?
Right.
Or is it something that is more simplistic, where we don't need a consultant? But, having only been here six weeks, we're not, I'm not there yet.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And one more question, is part of that, are we also looking at the new technologies available for routing, the, you know, apps or whatever are available, like, you know, when Waze came out, it was like revolutionary. So I'm wondering if there, are we looking at the new technologies that are available to make the routes more efficient?
Well, there's two types of technology, Ed, from what you said. Are you talking about the apps for parents to track their routes? Are you talking about routing software for the people who work in transportation?
I was thinking for the routing for in-transportation.
Yes, we are going through an upgrade, actually, right now.
Well, that's great. And what are the differences in the program, just so we understand, when we say an upgrade? What's, what's changing?
It's more robust. We're using the same software, but a different version of it. And it's just, we aren't there yet. We aren't there yet to know what we can do with it, but we are upgrading so that we can reap the benefits of newer, more robust software, to be able to use a GPS more efficiently, and integrate more with Infinite Campus.
I guess my question was, are we exploring other applications out there, rather than kind of default going to the next higher, newer of what we have? Like, are we actually exploring to look for certain features that might make it more efficient? Just because of, you know, we've all seen it, there's buses that are super crowded, and then right next to it is a bus that's almost empty. And so-
1718 is the last year of the contract, so we have a consultant budgeted for, to help us build the spec, and that'll be part of that process.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions on pages 103 to 115? Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
Just one quick follow-up on Ms. Lou McCormick's question, and again, also, thank you. I know Mr. Fickie was addressing all of our questions last week, and addressed a lot of these very same topics a week ago, and I apologize, I didn't notice this then, to ask him, but on page 39, it's a very small discrepancy, but I just was curious-
Going backwards?
Because I'm comparing the two, that's what I apologize for not catching last week, that on page-
Page 39.
There's a reference to $255,000 on this line, it's $258,000, that Mrs. Lou McCormick just referenced on page 113. And I, and again, we had him a week ago to ask this, so I don't know if anybody knows this now, but I was just wondering if you knew the reason for that discrepancy?
On page 113 that we just looked at, that's, that's, this section of the budget is by department, so, and what you were looking at before-
On page 39.
Page 39 is by this summary object. So I believe it's training, tech training, that's in the tech department-
Okay.
-as opposed to business services.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on pages 103 to 115? Shall we move on to the next section? Seeing no hands go up, 118, the next section, 118 and 119. If the public will allow, board members to leaf through the pages, so that they see what notes they've taken. Don't see any hands go up, so we'll move on to section, item D, which is the support information, which is pages 121 to 163. This essentially includes a lot of backup information related to numbers that are posted in the front of the book.
Just one quick question, and again, this is just a follow-up to the one that I'd submitted regarding what the six-day rotation will do to the elementary school, and my hope, first of all, I just wanted to say, you know, how thrilled I am that the staff is open to changing, that this isn't just this trying to stay with the status quo and find ways to address these issues. That idea of trying to find that common professional development time across grade levels, that they thought a little bit out of the box on that, to make this change, a small investment, and I think, which I hope will have a big payoff. And I, it's not really a question, it's just a statement regarding the answer, that I'd hope that somehow this change might help with the fifth grade. I know what an issue it is for the fifth-grade teachers, that this, the pull-out instruction for all of the, all of the instruments, for gifted, for other instructional support, really makes that whole class instruction time challenging at times. So, you know, just reiterating that I'm so glad that you're trying something different, trying a new way to address certain needs, and hopefully, that maybe this can be something that gets worked into that. I know with some of these teachers who go to multiple buildings, it could really be challenging, but, again, just thank you for the answer and the very lengthy chart on this one, so, thank you.
That's kudos to Mike Cummings.
Pages 121 to 163, any questions on the support information that is, is in there? Yeah, and maintenance is in there, too. And while you're looking, I'll remind the board that tomorrow's Board of Selectmen meeting, the non-reoccurring project budgets that we had approved in a prior meeting, will be in front of the Board of Selectmen, for them to review and approve, hopefully, so that it will then go on to the Board of Finance, and then ultimately, to the RTM. So tomorrow, we're on the agenda, the Board of Education's projects are on the agenda for review and approval by the Board of Selectmen.
And they do that in one meeting? Both the review and the approval?
Have in the past, there's no guarantee of the future. Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I don't know if this is located on a specific page, but this kind of prompts me to ask again, because I feel like we might have talked about this a couple years back, regarding the number of hours allocated to the various disciplines. I don't know if you'll recall us talking about this, and that how we should probably review, at some point, how we allocate our time to courses such as STEM, like the math and science, because from what I recall, when I had done some sort of a analysis from state information, which may or may not have been perfect, we were low on our time allocation to science, technology, and math. And I am wondering if, in fact, that had ever been reviewed or revised, if that had ever resulted in a cost, or if we just still, over the last few years, have not reviewed it. it.
And are you speaking K through 12, or were you thinking of a particular?
Well, I think the allocation is most relevant probably to elementary school, because I think the other ones are kind of set.
Yeah, and Mr. Cummings can come forward, but I would say, too, in K-5, it's very difficult to go in and start parsing. Math is pretty easy. Language arts is pretty easy, but when you start talking about technology, it's integrated throughout all core areas.
But I remember science and math specifically were low. We were low relative to our, many of our peers, and I think the state average. Maybe wrong, but we were on the low side, is what I remember. And we had all agreed that we needed to talk about this at some point, but that it's constantly being reviewed within administration, so you guys are always changing as required to, you know, improve it. So I'm wondering if there's a cost associated with that review, if we've done it over the last three years, or if we just haven't even done this, or allocated in the budget for that kind of a change.
Good evening. Mike Cummings, Director of Elementary Education. There is, the review, as you stated, is an ongoing process. I would say to you that we look at a minimum of about 70 minutes per day for math. That may not come in a continuous stream, but we look for about 70 minutes a day in math. Certainly at a kindergarten level, that's going to be broken up. It wouldn't be continuous, that even in the fourth or fifth grade, you might see an hour and then a 10-minute block on some skill building. So, language arts, we're working more diligently to integrate language arts into social studies and science. It's part of the discussion we've had in the past about, as I've proposed, to do the social studies in 3-5 next year, science the following year, and hold off on K-2, because we want to build, we want to make sure that we do have the instructional time necessary for science and social studies. But our days, our elementary days are primarily language arts and math. We also then build science and social studies in, usually out of a five-week cycle of a science unit followed by a social studies unit, and they alternate throughout the year. K-2 is going to be heavier in language arts and math than 3-5 will be. And as Dr. Jones stated, our technology is really integrated throughout the day. I think our library media specialists have taken the lead on this, the support people, technology support people that we have during the day, and our ever-growing awareness of our classroom teachers, and as you know in our budget requests, that we're looking for even more technology at the elementary level, it really is becoming part of the wallpaper, as it were, with, you know, standard expectations for what the skills should be over time, but a constant application of those skills throughout the day.
Thank you for that. You know, I was specifically focused on science and math. I kind of threw technology in there, because I think that's kind of a looking-forward type of a increasing time commitment. If you recall, in the past, it seemed that we were very heavily allocated in LA. We are much more heavily allocated in LA than our peers. But we were, in exchange, because we all have the same number of hours in a day, lightly allocated, more lightly allocated in math and science in particular. And I was wondering if we had rebalanced relative to our peers. You know, we can call that DRGB or DRGA, or a combination of both, but I'm wondering if we've actually gone through that step of analyzing it and deliberately readjusting.
We've not formally gone through that. We really have allowed and followed the lead of what we feel the students, the curriculum and the skill and expectations, content expectations for what students should be. I will say to you that I think a 70-minute period in math, or 70 minutes allocated per day in math, is on the, to my experience, not just in the districts I've worked in, but in conversations with my colleagues, is on the high end of average. Science, most elementary schools, particularly in the lower grades throughout the state, are going to work, face the similar challenges we do, and that's as true with social studies as well, working to find content and to fit that into the day. So I don't know right now what the current state averages are. I think that's something we're always, I'm not thinking of that when I raise the issue, and I alone not raising the issue, but this is certainly an issue that our principals and our teachers have brought forward. We want to be able to spend more time in social studies and science as a means to teach students that, the content of those areas, but also the application of their language arts and math skills. So that's something we're continually in the process of, but we're not, in a sense, conducted a formal review.
It would be interesting, I think. I think the last time I looked at it was 2012. So to see if, in fact, we've moved, or if other districts have moved as well, and how they've fared in the various discipline, you know, I don't know what we look at versus the SBA or versus whatever, to see if it's impactful, if there's any correlation between the amount of time or hours spent and the performance in a particular discipline. And I don't know if there is a budgetary implication by doing such a shift. If there was, I would recommend that we allocate some amount of the budget to it.
I would not think that that would require any budget funds.
So all we require is an assessment?
It would require data analysis, and beginning with finding the most current data around that, and looking for an accurate representation of that data from our colleagues.
Okay. So all we have to do is just do it, basically? There's no cost associated?
No, there would not be costs with that.
We're still on the support information and maintenance projects, which is pages 121 to 163. Mr. Patton and Ms. Carnell, I know that you sent questions in in advance, and they're part of the answers to your packet, as well as Mrs. Gerber has done that. And, but before I move on to other people, do any of the three of you have questions that you wanted to ask? Just in the interest of equal time? You don't need to, I'm just...
I'm good for right now, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Mrs. Maxon Connolly, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
Just one question on page 147 regarding the curriculum review calendar. I did notice three changes from last year's calendar, and science, obviously, I understand being bumped a year, makes sense, let's get it right. Two others that were changed, however, were the technology ed and the developmental guidance. And I was wondering if there was, I mean, the obvious reason, I wasn't sure if this was the reason, was just the number of curricula we'd be seeing in a year, but I didn't know if there was any other reason for those to be moved.
It is, it is a balancing of curriculum presentations as well as status updates. When I first worked on this, probably about two years ago, Dr. Tidal asked me not to have too many in any one year because of the time involved in board meetings for that. So the tech ed was just a balancing move. The other consideration for developmental guidance is that what we would like to first develop is a framework of social-emotional learning, and we thought that was important to develop that before we did the curriculum for developmental guidance. So I wanted another year to get to that.
That one was actually bumped two years.
Right.
So, so that's the gathering?
It's, well, developing a social-emotional framework, K-12, is a huge task, but we thought it was important to do that before we wrote this curriculum or revised health. And so I felt like we needed that much time. We have a developmental guidance curriculum now, so it's not as though we're not doing it at all. But we wanted to do a very good job, and I needed that amount of time to get the groundwork down before we could do the developmental guidance curriculum.
Thank you.
Mr. Llewellyn.
Perfect. Page 153, please. Technology capital outlay. So we have $2 million slated here, and what's the difference in three of the different buckets? So we have an annual refresh of computer hardware for $1,300,000 that lists different machines that are needed. But then we have a replacement of non-reparable equipment for another $300,000. How is that different from the refresh?
Good evening. Nancy Burns, Director of Technology. The difference between the two accounts are, the annual refresh is our planned refresh. It's the equipment that we determine has reached the end of its useful life, and on an annual basis, we try to keep up with that.
Mm-hmm.
The other figure is what we call our emergency repair slash replacement fund for those things that go awry during the course of the school year. Once upon a time, that was in a maintenance account, and in discussions with the Director of Finance, I think, three or four years ago now, I think, we determined that since we don't repair much anymore, most things are, you know, are disposable, that it made more sense to put it in capital equipment. So that's why you see that as a separate line item now, rather than it being in maintenance, because there's so little that's done on a repair basis.
Okay. Thank you. And what was spent kind of on that emergency basis, like in the last couple of years?
I could get that for you, and I'll have it handy.
Kind of curious.
It's pretty well expended every year.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Stuff's probably, I'm sure, breaking all the time.
But every year, it depends, we seem to have a different flavor each year. Sometimes it might be server equipment, sometimes it's a group of printers, sometimes it could be a technology education specialized printer that might cost $15,000.
Right.
This year, we had an emergency in the keyboard lab at one of the high schools. It failed, we intended to replace both this summer, this coming summer, and we had to replace one this year, because it couldn't make the, couldn't meet the curriculum needs of the students.
And the keyboarding, was that the one that's approved last season, right?
Yes.
Keyboarding, yes, that's the thought. Okay, thank you. And then in terms of the acquisition, the bottom plan here for another 240, what's the difference between the support curriculum instruction plans versus, let's just say, the refresh?
The acquisition of equipment is additional equipment that's been requested by either curricular areas or the departments or the schools in support of a particular initiative. For example, Mr. Cummings just mentioned the request to get more technology into the elementary schools. There's a Chromebook initiative included in those requests.
Okay.
So that, we allocate that separately, and we basically go out to all the schools and all the departments, actually in October, and ask them for their thoughts. We merge that with the technology plan, and then we prioritize them, and that's how we come up with that number.
Okay. Thank you. So I, it might be helpful to understand if we were to merge the groups together. I mean, clearly, if one's emergency, we don't know what that is yet, but it might be helpful to understand, you know, how many total computers, notebooks, Chromebooks, whatever they may be, that we're going to be purchasing? Because we have kind of Chromebooks down below, but they could also probably be up above.
We haven't had Chromebooks in the district long enough to need to replace them.
Well, I mean, on the refresh, right?
Yeah, they're not in the refresh yet, because we've only had them for two years.
You could refresh a laptop with a Chromebook based on what they are.
Well, yeah, if you want to look at it that way, I'm sorry.
They're interchangeable, I would assume.
Absolutely.
And it might be helpful to understand how many we've purchased over the last, I don't know, three, four years, because five years is probably the useful life?
Well, I have a five-year waterfall. I think I shared an early version of that with you folks last year, which shows the number of computers we anticipate replacing over the next five, and the dollars allocated. I've expanded that chart, which I would be happy to share. I haven't updated it since summer, because obviously, there's been things that change over the course of the school year.
Right.
But it includes wireless access points, servers, universal power supplies, probably some of the printers, as well as the computing devices that we use in the district.
Okay, because...
If that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to get an idea of kind of where we are in the process. You know, do we have 2,000 machines, 10,000 machines?
No, we have over 7,000 machines.
Okay.
Yeah.
For 10,000 students and 1,000 and 1,500 staff?
And that's computers, those are computing devices, as opposed to printers and all the other stuff.
Okay. So, I mean, there is a lot out there, I think.
Yeah.
So, no, it'd be good to see kind of how many we have and where. The one thing I will ask for, though, is, how much do we have in for document cameras? I think we determined at one of these meetings that we could get a $30 overhead to replace them. I think that was a lot of money from what I remember, so I'd like to have that number broken out, please.
There's only one document camera request, I think. There might be two in the acquisition line here, and I'll be happy to provide that to you.
Is it anywhere else in the budget?
No.
Did we already buy them?
We have bought some using PTA grant money, and then there've been some seed attempts. A school's been buying, you know, one here, one there, just to prove the concept. But that's pretty much the only way they've been funded, and we've settled on what costs is a little under $100 in the unit that we're using now.
Well, that's much better than what we saw last time.
Yeah.
It was like multiple for every school, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And they were like $400, $500?
Well, they range. I mean, you can buy a document camera from, for $85, you can buy one for $650. It really depends on what it does. But for our purposes, we've determined that this $100 device actually does the trick for us.
I like the way I hear. Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
Just one quick follow-up. Just to clarify my memory, the Chromebooks obviously have, I can think of lots of uses for them. The S-PAC cannot be taken on them, though, correct?
They can, yes.
They can on the Chromebooks?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think we have a device in the district that is not capable of taking the S-PAC, except the iPads that are used in special ed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Last call for questions on support information, pages 121 to 163. Mr. Patton?
I wanted to wait and jump back after this section was finished on, if I could go to 119 at some point, which is the program breakdown. I wanted to wait until...
Yeah, page 119.
We'll go to page 119 for the program breakdown and backtrack a bit, please.
And your question?
We've gone through a bunch of the general programming in terms of decreases and increases and the reasons, and the programs that stick out that are, you know, roughly $200,000 plus or minus that I don't remember going over are things like 1112 music, which has increased to by about $2,000, $200,000 across all grades. The mathematics decrease, I assume is the, we're not, or we purchased the materials for the new K-5, and we don't need that anymore? I'm taking a guess at that, if anybody wants to take a stab at these.
That's 1111.
That's 1111. And then...
If you highlight the ones and we can...
And then social studies is 1115. So, let's see. And 1108 health also had about a $200,000 increase pre-K-12. So I know spread out across multiple grades is not huge, if you break it down, but if there's anything specific that stuck out. Music was the one that really kind of stuck out in my head, that and the health.
By salaries are included, some programs for each salary, the salaries for each program, rather, are in their respective programs, so all the things that we talked about earlier, about the differences in salary, will be...
So it's really, so the majority is all really salary increases?
For the most part, I would think...
Depends how it broke down, okay.
For the most part, I would think so, but I'd have to look in detail to see for each one, if you have particular questions.
Really just those, just those four areas, if there were actual program reasonings other than salaries for FTE?
So if you want to make a note, 1108, 1111, 1112, and 1115, perhaps you could just confirm if all of these increases really relate to salaries, or whether there's something unique in the program materials or supplies or whatnot that stand out.
Thanks.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Since we're on this page, so I see the preschool is broken out, and is...
What page are you on?
The same page. I'm just looking at the page that Mr. Patton raised. So the preschool program, is that inclusive of trans, is this like an all-in total proposed cost of the program?
For the board, that's, that's number 1117.
Uh-huh. I'm just thinking about all of them in general, but if I look specifically at that one, when I had gotten my answer for what the total cost of running the pre-K was, that was different. So I'm just wondering, what does this encompass versus, you know, like what was laid out inside the board questions-answer sheet? Which is, you know, if I'm referring to page four within it, where there was a fairly detailed layout of the pre-K program. So I've told program costs were $372, the revenue was $143, so the net cost was $229. This looks like the preschool is net, I don't know if it, $199, is that what this says? So I guess I'm just not clear what this includes versus what this includes. And then by the same questioning, I would go down to the special education line, which is the biggest item on this, single item on this page, which states... is the biggest item on this, single item on this page, which states that it's 21 and a half million. But from what I recall from prior years, the total special ed program runs to about 24% of the budget. So I just, I just, I'm not clear what this page encapsulates versus what a total program cost is.
Yeah, I think the number that you had earlier had all of the line items in it.
Yeah.
And on the top of 118, on that first paragraph where it talked, just on that previous page, it talks about what's not included, like health insurance in this number down below, and I think the number you had earlier was all in. But we'll get that for you and...
Yeah, just so I understand what the difference is, because like I would like to see what the total cost of programs are, as well as whatever this is showing me, though I'm not clear what this is showing me, which you'll lay out. But this, I think it would be nice to see what the total costs are. Thank you.
Final questions on section 121 to 163? 121 to 163, Ms. Carnell?
Well, we might as well stay on 119. I guess I'm going to go backwards, but the human resource has seemed to be budgeted one way and the estimated expenditure is substantially different. So I'm just curious why it's budgeted one way and the numbers seem so drastically different.
Sorry, through the chair.
Anne Leford, Director of Human Resources, that's okay. So if I'm understanding your question, let's just look at the first line art, we're on 119, right?
No, I was looking at 26...
2640, bottom of the page.
Oh, sorry. That's just in, in my department, the six staff members in the department. We have several new staff members in that, in that department. Dorian, I need your help with the difference there, though. Oh, subs, okay, that's what it is.
So subs fall under human resources?
Mm-hmm.
Then no other place in the budget?
I would need Dorian to elaborate on that particular line.
Ms. Montzel, would you join her, please?
That makes no sense. Question? Yes, they do, because we don't have subs broken down by program. In other words, we would, we already have a gazillion sub accounts, but if we broke them down by program and by school, if, you know, we would have substitutes for language arts or reading or math or, they're all under one program, which is HR, because it's a part-time employment.
So is there a chance that we can get a breakdown of how much of that is subs versus how much of that is human resources?
Sure.
Okay, you're looking, you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Because I think, Ms. Leford, did you say we added one more person to the budget? Okay. So if you can get me that breakdown, that'd be great.
Just to clarify, we had some changes in staffing, no additions or subtractions as far as FTE, but changes in the people who are in the office. Okay?
Other questions, Ms. Carnell, or?
Bear with me, my apologies for taking the board out of sequence, and this might have been answered, so apologies. On 1200, we have special ed. So it looks like we're, the change will be about a million and a half. So I guess I have two questions, one should lead into the other. What is that million and a half going to cover, or what will that million and a half not cover?
I don't know, that was fine.
What I meant was, what it won't cover, does that mean there's other expenses in the budget book for special ed?
Andre Leonardi, Director of Special Ed, I always forget to do that, I apologize.
We know you.
Right? The town knows you. I've been around a while. The, if you remember, if we go through this whole book, there are areas that are part of that million five increase. Some of them are staffing. We've added teachers across, in a number of different areas, so we've added special education teachers. We also have some of the increases in the different big-ticket line items. We've talked about physical therapy, we've talked about professional consultation, we've talked about the other, other services, other professional services account. So those increases that we've talked about at length over the past couple of nights are all part and parcel of that increase overall. So you see, there's, there are FTE as part of that, there are also dollars that are part of that increase that we've talked about in the different big ticket, big buckets, I would call them, across the budget.
Excuse me, just to continue on then, excuse me, would 2140...
Fall onto that, or is that totally separate? 2140...
Right.
Is psychological services? That's, that has to do with the account we spoke about the other day in the, in the revisions to a number of speech and language testing tools that have come up, that we are obligated to buy the revised normed doc, revised normed kits across 17 school sites. That's what that 30,000 represents.
So it would be an increase of that plus the increase of the million and a half, or that's with, so it really is more than the million and a half, there's other areas?
Primarily those, let me just do a quick...
Thank you.
...look, but I believe those, 2150, the speech and language services, 2140 psych services, these are all in the, my job description is Director of Special Education and Pupil Services. So we have the special education program and then we have pupil services. Speech and language, psychological services, so 2140, 2150. While I'm not responsible for the budget in 2120, the guidance, that is a piece of pupil personnel services.
Whose budget does that fall under?
It really falls in this, each school has, has guidance. It's primarily FTE. I, in my budget, I budget for their professional development, I budget for those things. Social work services, 2110, 1200, special education.
Can I interrupt and follow on to yours? Would you mind?
Before you interrupt, you're just finishing your look at the...
I mean, while it doesn't really sit squarely, alternative education has been a part of my, my piece of the puzzle as well, so I would put 1119 in there as well.
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
So this is what I was going to ask, is on that note, because I think that's a really good point, because I think this total adds up to the total budget, right? But the items, what would be nice, and I know we've talked about this in the past, but I never made a specific request, but I think as it relates to this, it would be clear, I think, for us and even for the public and for all of us to see, can we divide these program numbers, meaning divide it by regular ed, and I asked this before, mandated, non-mandated budget, gifted, mandated, non-mandated, and I say that because gifted, mandated testing, non-mandated the services, special ed, mandated, non-mandated, I don't know if there's anything that's non-mandated, but in the event that we had elements within it, like, you know, what you just mentioned before, like the Fitzpatrick or, you know, whatever, the, you might be able to carve out some elements that, you know, are kind of separate program items, and then ELL, and I don't know if that, what that falls under the other categories or if that's a special, separate program.
I would just be very careful to parse things out by regular ed and special ed, because regular ed is the, all children are regular ed, some students have a, are a subset who receive additional special education services. So I think it would be, it would be misleading to the public to think that they are that easily black and white and broken out that way. I think we can try some...
You can try, and maybe you footnote and say, you know, some portion of this is covered by regular ed.
I would be very, very careful about parsing out what is regular ed and what is special ed, since all children with disabilities are part of the general education program.
What I meant is the special ed services. So if they're going to speech, then the speech element, but not their math and LA and, you know, all that other stuff, that's regular ed. But the speech services would be special ed. And to the extent we can do that to get a first general sense, because we've never really done this before, I think it would be nice to just see those general terms, and I, over time, I imagine we could get more detailed and understand it more thoroughly, but it would be good to see those big blocks, and if possible, if you have that information, because you probably have the information, it's just cutting it a different way over the last few years, so we can see what the trends are in each of the buckets. Because I think that's very interesting and it helps you kind of budget and manage, you know, where are we allocating money and what is the performance been for our investment? You know, have we really knocked it out of the ball, you know, with what we've done for ELL kids, based on how much we've invested in them? Or have we found that, you know what, they're really, based on their performance, we maybe need to invest more? Or, you know, same with the gifted, oh, they've been doing great with such a little investment, or maybe they need more investment, maybe these kids are starting to fall off the curve. That could be true for all of the different sectors. I think when you start looking at the bundles, I think that would be really interesting to see and better understand what these numbers are, because we've got a lot of different things encapsulated in some of these sub-buckets.
There are many different things encapsulated. We were asked to do this a couple of years ago to kind of try to parse it all out into departments or into programs. And so when you do that, when you try to do that, it's, it's a bit of an artificial exercise.
Right.
Because it's not as clean as you'd like it to be.
I know.
So I'm, I'm willing to try anything that the superintendent directs me to do. I'm, I just would want to be careful, because it, it's not as clean as you would think it is to slice it up this way, and it may actually lead to further confusion than more clarity.
Like I said...
We're giving artificial buckets to try to help people understand big picture items and then trying to then break them out into the minutia.
I understand.
I'd want to be very careful.
Try footnote, footnote, and also, you know, I just want to bring it back to the kids to understand how this is all working, because these are just line items, some of them, to me. You know, I can't understand exactly.
Bring it back to the kids every single day, you're right.
How about final questions on pages 121 to 163, with the exception of Ms. Carnell, who got, you were at a business meeting, so you got here late.
Thank you very much.
So you have a little bit more wide-ranging ability.
I gotta pay the high taxes in this town. I, Ms. Leonardi, I just have one last question.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Okay.
Now I lost my, I never lose my thought, it gets misplaced well. Legal fees, is that? I know the legal fees are some here and somewhere on the book, I think they're on page 130-something, but what is the breakdown for the special ed legal fees?
You mean how much of the total legal fee dollar?
Right.
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to go back and look at the total dollar figure. I wouldn't want to venture a guess. I'd say significant. I just, I can't, I don't want to, I don't want to take a guess on a...
You sound like a politician.
On a percentage, but we can get that to you.
Well, according to Mrs. Gerber, I think I have it, right? Was that what you sent me? I don't want anybody to do extra work, the legal fees.
We have in the past, I think on two different occasions, gotten a report on legal fees for various categories. I forget what the date was on the last one, do you remember the, you know?
I guess when, would have to be, Mr. Lou Ellen, do you remember what page the legal fees are on?
They're under superintendent's budget in the 200s, I think. Oh, page 74. Sorry, it was 305 is the area and it's, line number 54125.
Okay.
Page 74.
74, item number 68. Right. But that's not broken down, right? That's for all the legal fees? Or they're, or they're broken down someplace else in the budget?
No, I don't believe that they're broke...
That's the total legal fee line, not broken out by any department.
The 600,000.
That's legal fees for the district across all issues.
There was another page that wasn't there where you had more detail?
I thought there was.
Speak into the microphone.
Just recalling that there is another page in here with more detail, I just can't remember where it is.
I can't either. But this line item that you see on page 74 is the total budgeted dollar figure for legal fees for the district. There may be a detail page somewhere, but that is the dollar figure for the district that we're budgeting.
Okay, there's definitely a figure off. I'll try to look for it, but if you, if we can find out then, what the percentage of the 600,000, I don't even want it just for special ed, I'd like to understand how it's broken down.
Basically an updated legal expense report.
I said only one more, I'm done.
That it? That's it. Kept my word.
So Ms. Montzel, I think you probably put together the last updated on legal fees and, and so perhaps take it through December 31 of this year, or something like that of last year. Thank you. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to E, item E.
What's that, E?
See, nobody raising their hand? Okay. Item E is the discussion of the superintendent's recommended budget request, and this is the time for members to indicate whether they are going to suggest any changes up or down for the board to consider. And so if you could let us know, that would be appreciated. One of the questions that was asked that will be posted among the documents for tomorrow morning is that the, are we reducing the textbook line too much so that we don't have enough and suddenly we'll have sticker shock when we have to put the budget back up the following year? I know the question was asked, the, I think the answer was what?
The answer is, yes, it will have to go back up if we in fact are going to need to purchase the science materials, and we'll have to look inside our budget, just like we did this year, when we reduced basically a million dollars of what was existing just to get us at the 3.1% superintendent's proposed. So we'll have to look at all of those line items, look at what we need to move across as we're building the entire budget for next year, and build that into either an increase or moving line items.
And I think the other philosophical half of the answer is, do you budget at a higher amount even though you know you don't need to spend it, but that smoothes the line out from year to year to year? And at the Board of Finance and other bodies, they frequently say, well, why should we budget for something we know we're not going to spend and therefore tax residents higher than we need to, and this year we'll increase it the following year? And generally, they remember the conversation, but not always. This is Maxine Caneli.
Yes, thank you. And when I had submitted that as an issue, not as a question, you know, I had been, one, very concerned about the sticker shock, because I know when that number gets put in, it's very sizable because of what textbooks cost. And of course, the argument can be made, much as we did with social studies, is that the money is in there and it would be purchased at the end of next school year for the following year, so that although it's used the following year, it could be purchased in the previous year. So that had been my concern, you know, I don't know if it's something that needs to, or I would reiterate, just like the earlier conversation regarding the utilities, I think this would be worth mentioning to some of them, hopefully they'll have the memory for next year, you know, if we don't make the motion, and I don't think that I will, it was just a concern, to increase the budget in order to increase the textbook line, but just that it gets explicitly mentioned to them, this is definitely a line that will go up, we do have a curricula in line that's going to need a investment.
I think in that same category of worthy of mention when we're presenting the budget to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM, also is the staff salaries line, where we have adopted a new methodology in budgeting for more retirees than historically we have budgeted, and we are not budgeting for those classes that are on the bubble, but this year, we had a number of them that had to get hired anyways. So we're budgeting to the bone in both of those areas, and that's something that ought to be highlighted, similar to the textbooks, I think. Any changes, Mrs. Lou McCormick?
So it's hard for me to make them right now, because I'm, I think I need to see some of the information that we're waiting back on, so I still haven't gotten the detailed information on the open choice and the pre-K, not the pre-K, the gifted program, as well as these historical trends within these larger buckets, which I think, I think I... buckets, which I think, I think I need to understand first. Though if I were to consider one of those in exchange for some curricular investment, like investment in curriculum, or teacher training, or something like that, I might consider that in exchange for some of the, I won't say non-essential, less essential, less essential in my opinion, maintenance projects, or-
Now, Mr. Cullen is getting nervous at this point.
That's okay. There may be nothing, you know, there may be nothing that I feel needs to be exchanged. Or perhaps there may be something else that we see that appears out of whack within where the allocation is. And I wouldn't want to necess, well, I might be more specific, but I would, probably wouldn't want to make a specific item recommendation, and leave it more to the discretion of, you know, Mr. Cullen, or whatever the category is, if we're looking to cut, to use your judgment, if it's in technology, or if it's in something infrastructure-related, or, you know, something like that. But in exchange for some curriculum, textbook, training, professional development, that would probably be what I might be interested in, but I don't know until I see those numbers. Thanks.
And one of the difficulties, as board members know, is if we, if we don't have a more specific idea that the staff can, can cost out, because sometimes when you have an idea, the costs are on various line items or in various departments, and when we pass the budget, we have to know which ones we're taking. So, so as soon as you can add a little bit more specifics to it, the staff might be better prepared on Thursday.
Well, I need to first see these, the information I receive. The sooner I can receive the information, the sooner I can have a think about it, and make a counter, and make a proposal. The other thing is that, I don't know if I need to, if I, let's say, you know, do I need to be so specific as to say, you know, the item at this school, I want to cut in exchange? Or can I say, I believe we could reduce $30,000, or $50,000, or $100,000, or $500,000 in this area, and would like to then invest in this area and this area by this amount? And leave it to the discretion of the staff as how best to implement it. I don't know that we necessarily need to be as specific as telling them exactly what to do, so much as showing guidance that maybe, let's shift our investment from this area to this area.
In the past, we have expected line items to be specified, rather than, let's take X out of this area, maintenance, and put it into this area, gifted, and let the staff figure out how to adjust the line items. When we pass the budget, we pass it by line item.
But, but we don't have to, right? We could leave it to the discretion and say, we want it within this area. Do we have to? I just, just because we've done it before, does it mean that we have to?
Maxon-Cannelli, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
I mean, it's, in our jurisdiction, we are the only town body that can do things by line item. You know, RTM, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance can suggest things. They cannot do it by line item, and what is reiterated every time is, that's left to the discretion of the Board of Ed.
Right.
And my question also is that, as of Thursday's meeting, we're not doing things with the idea of a suggestion, or I believe this, or I think this. It's formal motions. I make a motion to add this money to this line, and reduce this, or reduce this item by this line. It's, I mean, obviously, there's a discussion, but ultimately, it comes down to motions that need to be prepared with dollar numbers.
No, I understand. So, just to clarify, I just want to make sure I'm clear, before I form, if I, if you want me to make it, do it properly, I want to say, like, let's say, I want to say, I'd like to reduce maintenance projects by $100,000, and allocate that to, I don't know, whatever, professional development within math, you know. Can I do that as broadly as that? Or do I have to say, we will do this particular floor repair, and this, like, I feel that someone else can make that decision, that's less important to me.
Let me ask, Mr. Cullen, while you list various projects for detailed description, is there's one line item that covers all of the projects? Or are those projects spread throughout various schools? So for instance, on page, page 155, the maintenance projects that are listed there that add up to $544,000, is that on one line item?
No.
They're spread throughout?
No, they're spread out and identified by each school.
Yeah, so you would-
Oh, so I'm due by school, then?
Yeah, so you would have to identify the specific project-
Actually-
-in order to get to the line item.
Or do I just do it by specific school? I can just do it by school?
There could be multiple at a school.
Right, so if I just identify the school, I don't have to identify the project? Because the line item is by the school, right?
Actually, I believe in past years, we have made cuts that were left to the discretion of Dr. Titlelos, to where to move the funds. I think if we're to say, we're going to cut a half a million dollar, we're going to cut $50,000, $100,000 from capital projects, you know, that's all going to fall, fall in the same basic category. So let's take a look at Thursday's statement of accounts, basically our quarterly update. Right out of the box, we've moved well over a million, too, from account to account to account, in the, you know, personal services. So, it can effectively go anywhere. I think if this board says, we want to reduce our spending on capital and reallocate it to education, you know, I think that that's probably at the purview. It depends if you want to be sticky on how we do this, but we can say, we want to cap the capital expenditures at, you know, 500 instead of the 544, and we would like to see that that be placed into professional development. I think that that is a, at the discretion of-
That would be a motion that would say, reduce this by X amount, and there's a professional development line-
Correct.
...within the administration section, and you could say, increase that, yes.
But we do not need to necessarily pick a project. We can say, we would like to reduce maintenance projects by $44,000, and increase professional development by the corresponding amount, to be left to the discretion of Dr. Jones. We've done it in the past, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to be clear, so thank you.
Other comments that board members have relative to Thursday's discussion about any changes? At the moment, I have one. Mr. Patton.
So, getting back to my question as to additional professional development days, before or not during regular school hours, after a little bit of research, and then seeing the answer to that question, which didn't shock me, $400,000 per day is about right, you know, dividing salaries up in what we pay teachers per day. But I guess my thought on the subject is, so, the number of school days required by the state is 180, yet we consistently have 182. And in recent history, there's only one time where we, at the discretion of the superintendent, for extra snow days and whatnot, we used the two, or one or two of those days, which obviously didn't affect, you know, breaking the statute at all. So I guess my question is, if, for example, the February break, one of the four days of the break is professional development, so the kids have off for four days, the staff has off for three days. But the staff is paid for 182, according to their contracts. Is that true?
187.
187. Okay. That includes, obviously, the 182 school days. Okay. So, budgetarily, other than the cost of the actual professional development, is it possible to take one of the extra two days that we are not mandated to have students be here for, and use that for extra professional development, where it would not be a significant, certainly not $400,000, significant at any rate, per day expense?
I'm going to look at the expression on Mrs. Lefort's face and say, I'm not sure she clearly understands what you're proposing.
So, Anne Lefort, Director of HR, it sounds like you want to reduce a student day and make it a PD day.
Hypothetically, yes, yeah.
We've had a longstanding practice of 182 student days.
Understood.
Yeah. That would have to be at the discretion of the superintendent, and talking with the staff, to talk about whether that would be a feasible project or not. We could not add a teacher day to go to 188, by adding another PD day, without bargaining the impact for that.
Understood, which is why, besides the expenses that were, you know, given to me in the, in the answer to the question, you know, I kind of understood that I was trying to figure out, well, how could, you know, how could, to get more professional development, and where would you get extra time? And in reality, you can't, but in reality, because we have two extra days that are not mandated, we chose to do that, for whatever reasons, years ago, no one has ever given me any, no superintendent, at least the three I've ever talked to-
Well, that was instructional time. That was an increase in instructional time.
Right. We just, we wanted two extra days of instructional time.
Correct.
But in all reality, between, at least elementary and middle school, you know, we all know that at the end of the year, you know, there are, you know, the last couple of days are not, I mean, you'll always have probably the last couple of days, there's not much to be done, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you'll always well.
So it really doesn't, so it really is probably taking out of instructional time, but, so at any rate, I guess, through the chair to the superintendent, to maybe revisit the question-
Right.
-with the staff, to see, is that anything that anybody would entertain? Because that's, you know, there's one thing to talk about it, and there's one thing to actually make a proposal to change something in the budget, but that's not really a line item, unless I took the exact amount of dollars and said that it was going to cost, you know, for the, converting one of those two days into PD, you know, let's say it was going to cost $75,000 or $100,000 for that extra day for the programming, and, you know, facilities and all that.
We don't, just, to keep it in perspective, we don't have a lot of extra days, and, you know, we look at this year, and we had one issue at McKinley, where they missed two days of school, and now something else popped up, which is, we'll be looking at Thursday, which is special election, that building has to go an extra day, in comparison to anybody else in the school division. So we have to look at the calendar from September through June. And you also want to make sure, if you're going to add professional development, it has to be at a time that's highly valuable for teachers. We have discussed, very briefly, you know, do we want to add a few early releases? That would be paid time, highly valuable. We could put those in the calendar, when it's useful for our teachers, and actually have high-quality professional development. So we're looking at that, and we agree with what you're saying, and your heart's in the right place. It's just making sure that when we put it on the calendar, it is where it's going to be highly effective.
And is that a decision that, I'm just asking, Mrs. Gerber, we adopt the calendar for the following school year in the fall?
I was also thinking that, as well.
And is that really the time that decision has to be made? Because it's more of an impact on the calendar than it is on the-
Right, when I realized that, you know, you can't just make teachers as, Max, Cannelli was telling me, in the last meeting, that, you know, are you, you know, was I saying to add extra days and make teachers come and get an extra day less of their summer vacation? No, because I understood about the contracts, and I was trying to figure out how to make that work. But certainly, having a half-day before February vacation, the Friday, or, you know, to try and link stuff together, or, you know, any other time that the staff would see fit, if that works, then I'm all for that.
So I'll assume that Dr. Jones is going, is looking at that, as how to get more professional development, and that might, we might see that in next year's calendar. I think Mr. Llewellyn had a question, and then Mrs. McCormick.
I just want to say, so currently, with, with this conversation, I'm not planning on trying to add or swap around $400,000 worth of anything on Thursday.
Thank you. Mr. Llewellyn.
On page 85 is a summary and second, object, I guess it's, 321 professional development, where we see a total expenditure proposed for next year of $706,000, I think? Yes? Is that an allocation of part of the payroll line, or is this additional cash? And Ms. Moncell, it's probably for you. Is this an allocation of kind of hours and time of part of the base salary, or is this incremental dollars on top of base salary?
He's looking at this number right here.
Does that make sense, the question?
No, I'm sorry, you're on page 85.
Sure, I'm on page 85, in the red there, 321 professional development.
Mm-hmm.
Proposed, 1718, 706 at the bottom.
Correct.
So, are these numbers kind of an allocation of teacher salaries? Or is this incremental cash beyond, is this overtime, basically? Is it an allocation, or is it additional money?
Well-
Or is it a combination?
The program implementation account are, are a combination of PD and curriculum development. So that's an hourly rate for a number of hours-
Like summertime work.
-for each, for various curricular writing.
Okay, so if we look, if we boil it down even further, if we look at 60 instructional services-
Mm-hmm.
-program implementation, so you're saying that that $448,000 is effectively hourly over the summers? Or is that an allocation of the salary during the school year?
Not.
I think that's paying, I think you're correct on your initial assumption, that that's hourly pay, paid during the summer for teachers to come in and do work.
Okay.
If I may add, it could also be a presenter who comes in to talk to a department-
Right, something out of pocket like that.
-workshops that we send teachers to.
Okay.
And we plan this so that, right, the summer after a curriculum is approved, that department gets an extra amount to write implementation guides, and the summer before a curriculum comes to the board, they get extra amount to finish writing the curriculum.
So, so where in the budget do we see, thank you, I think, I understood it, I think, as, as the extra. Where do we see in here the, yes, it was that page there, page 146. So the numbers on 146 roll up into, basically, you know, X number of teachers at Y school, kind of base salary, so to speak?
Right, so the professional development and curriculum development together are what go into the program implementation.
Okay, perfect. That, that was the clarification. Thank you.
Yep, just because of Mark's question.
So we have one, at the moment, potential. That doesn't mean that you're not allowed to come with a new idea that you thought about Thursday morning, but the more advanced notice you give to board members, the better the discussion will be. Okay, so I think that wraps up our review of the budget book. Whoa, Ms. Carnell.
Thank you. I just have a question. It starts on page 103, and it's for each school. It seems like the maintenance services throughout all the schools seem to be, some are minus the large amount, some are zero. I know, I wasn't here right there.
No, no, it's in the right, in the handover.
Oh, okay. Did you also catch that, or had none? I was just curious. Okay, so I can just-
I'll go on yesterday.
Is that for today's set, or last week's set?
Yes. I did that we got an email for the other day, or yesterday.
And it's question number-
Pages seven and eight. Seven had to do with elementary schools, and eight had to do with middle schools. And I did mention, I asked, that some were zero. So it's page eight, in this handout that we got yesterday, by email, and today, here.
And so you?
And so it says, if a, if a school has no maintenance project and/or multiple projects, there will be no 313 maintenance services line item showing funding. And then, yeah, not all schools have maintenance projects each budget year.
Are these the maintenance projects that Mr. Cullen is asking us to approve?
So the 313 maintenance services line item for each school is actually from the project list on page 155 and 56. So if a school last year, say Fairwood High School, had $100,000 in projects, this year they have none, you'd see a negative $100,000, and then a zero request. That's why they're all up and down in, in numbers.
So the projects that you are asking for, they would be in the maintenance?
They'd be under 313 maintenance services for each school-
Right.
-and then in the back, where the maintenance projects are listed.
Okay, so they should add up. Thank you.
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll now move on to public comment on the superintendent's recommended 2017, 2018 budget request. Any member of the public that would like to come forward and comment on the budget book, or the discussion we've had, please state your name and address.
Hi, Linda Erickson, 65, for staff. This is just a random comment. Sherman is listed as a 504 capacity school on the last page, and it's not. I can't remember what it is for something, but it's not 504. So it's just, it keeps coming up that way. I know Principal Roxby keeps saying it's not.
So we'll check that page. Thank you.
43.
Is what it is, but, and so on the page, it says 504. Is what it is, but, and so on the page it says 504, she said. So Mrs. Gerber commented that it should be 483, I believe she said. So anyways, please state your name and address.
Christine Vitale, 254 Vernon Hill Road. I just really have a request. If any board members do think they're going to be making specific changes to the budget and if it is known, you know, as soon as it's known, if there's a way that maybe the board of the budget reps for each school could be known, just let it, knowing that it's on the table, just so parents can have an opportunity to weigh in. I think that if a program's going to be added to or a project's going to be cut, I think it would be good for parents just to know and have a chance to let their voice be heard. Just judging by the amount of parents here, I think a lot of people are just appreciate that it's a lean budget and didn't foresee a lot of changes. And since no specific amendments were really offered tonight, it would just be helpful. So I appreciate anything you can do on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and talk about the next year's budget? Seeing nobody coming forward, just prior to adjournment, again, I'll state that the Q and A document that was handed out, well, emailed last night and handed out today will be posted on the website. There are questions and then a couple of appendices. The AP Scores appendix is several pages long, so you may want to post that as a separate document so that if people just really want to get to the questions and they don't want 14 pages of color graphs, that they could see those as separate documents. Thursday, just as a reminder, in addition to the budget, the school calendar, adjustment for the school calendar is on the agenda, and that's to make room for the special election for the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen have to officially set the date at their meeting tomorrow, and so we put it on the agenda so that we could take action to affirm it if the Board of Selectmen takes action. If they don't take action, then we'll have to defer it until we have an official date. I have no doubt that they will approve it, but don't want to, you know, second guess what they will or will not do. If you have any other questions that have come up on the entire booklet, please feel free to get them to Dr. Jones so that you have whatever information you need for the vote. With no further conversation, a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Patton seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.